Okay. I'd like to call the committee of the whole workshop meeting of March 25th, 2019 to order. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chambers doors and obey all instructions given by the clerk. Julie, can you raise your hand because we've got people here that don't know who you are? Okay. So Julie will lead us out. If assistance is required, please see her. Once you've evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. There's a blue sign in the northeast corner. Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Everyone's in attendance except for Councilman Jimma. Staff are in attendance, I see. Are there any declarations of interest this evening? Councilor McLough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to declare an interest regarding 6.1, the Jordan Village Improvement Project, as I own two properties on that street, 3755 19th Street and 3805 19th Street as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda for this evening. There's no consent agenda, so let's delve right into our regular agenda. So 6.1. We're now considering item 6.1. We've got John Perks, Associate Director of IBI Group, will be providing us with a presentation regarding the Jordan Village Improvement Project. Mr. Perks, would you like to come forward, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council and staff. IBI Group is very pleased to be here today to present our work on the improvements within Jordan Village. This is a very exciting project, one that we see transforming the village into a very inviting and welcoming destination for visitors, whether they be arriving by bicycle, car, or bus. We have prepared a detailed presentation for you which will overview the various components of the project and our vision for them. This presentation will last approximately 40 minutes and will be followed by an opportunity for interactive questions and discussion. I should be advancing this slide, so as I said, five minutes for me and then 40 minutes for Jen and Zibby, followed by a discussion period of 45 minutes. So I should introduce Jen and Zibby. So Jennifer is a landscape architect with IBI Group, and she's been very, very involved in the project up until now. Most of the work is, may not under seen by her. And Zibby Pelch is also with IBI Group, and she's our active transportation engineer and also has been very involved in the road cross-sections and from an active transportation perspective. So just I'll give a brief background to the project and history to it that led to today's meeting. The project needs were first identified over a decade ago in the 2006 Vineland, Jordan and Jordan Station Secondary Plan. This plan in part identified that Jordan Village area was in need of a roadway operation and intersection improvements. In addition to the road network improvements, the secondary plan highlighted that Jordan Village area also required improved pedestrian, cyclist, and parking accommodations, given its importance as a tourist destination within the town and in the larger regional area. Given the scope of the potential improvements to be considered in the Jordan Village improvement area, the town's project team at the time deemed the project should proceed as a Schedule B Class Environmental Assessment. A Schedule B Class EEA acknowledges that any improvements proposed will likely have significant impact to the community and surrounding environment, and as such, the design alternatives are subject to a structured screening process that includes public consultation. At the time Niagara Region partnered with the town on the EA study, given that jurisdiction of the King Street intersection was under their control. The EA study was filed, a Part II Order appeal was filed by a public citizen. This appeal was dismissed in March of 2018 by the Ministry of Environment with the following three conditions: that the town consider dedicated cycling lanes as part of the final design of the proposed project; two, that the town consult with the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority during the detailed design phase of the project to determine additional mitigation measures and quality control measures for stormwater runoff within the project area; and finally, that the town must hold at least one public open house during the detailed design phase of the project to discuss the final design of the pedestrian open space on Main Street, and the final design be posted on the project's website. So those were the three conditions coming out of that Part II Order. And so the project represents a continuation of an advancement of the preferred alternative coming out of that Class EA. The project includes proposed improvements to Main Street between King Street to the south and the sort of established developed commercial area to the north. It also includes 19th Street between King Street to the south and Fourth Street to the north. And finally, the construction of Snur Lane in order to close the access of Main Street onto King Street and to improve that whole intersection, as well as to provide an opportunity to construct a public square at the southern end of Main Street. We have drawn heavily on the past work completed, but we also looked at it afresh to ensure we create a destination that's inviting and encourages visitors to cycle and walk within the village. Accordingly, our urban designers, landscape architects, and active transportation engineers have been hard at work looking at place-making options and developing the preliminary design that will be presented tonight. So with that as my introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, who will guide us through the different aspects of the design to date. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As John mentioned, my name is Jennifer Moore, and I'm a landscape architect at IBI, and I've been leading the charge in the design of the urban realm on this project, and we're going to take you through where the design is at currently. Okay. So at the start of the project, we set out some project and design objectives, and we want to, the goal of the project is to embrace and enhance the village character. It's an existing village that has a strong local character that we would like to maintain, but to add on and bring up to date. We want to create a world-class destination, and we want to bring the village together in a holistic way through connectivity and use a cohesive design palette. The design focuses on iconography, wayfinding, and bringing mobility and accessibility up to 2019 standards while still being sensitive to the historic context. Our aim is to provide an end product that is welcoming, intuitive, and accessible to Some of the guiding factors that we looked at in the beginning, again, there's a lot to draw on locally. This area being a wine region, we want to, we want the materials to speak to that. It's a historic village. There are many activities that are already going on. We want to encourage those and provide facilities that will help grow that aspect of tourism. But with all of these events, obviously, parking is going to be needed for these events, and we have looked at that as well. There's, the established tree canopy is essential to the local character. We've heard that over and over again. So we've been looking at, is there possibilities to preserve some of these trees in the short term and then replace in the long term? There's an established character that should be embraced, enhanced, and built upon. We know that there are engaged stakeholders, local business owners and residents, and we look forward to hearing from them as the public process continues. We want to provide safe, accessible facilities for pedestrians, cyclists, motorists. We are taking into account the fire department needs as well as delivery trucks. The location of Hydro has been a big topic in the design. Whether we, do we bury it? Do we relocate poles? Do we accommodate the existing poles? There are big costs associated with these various items, and we've been considering those as we move through the design. There's also the proximity to natural areas and the steep slopes. So the design is currently in the concept development stage, and currently it features superior cycling facilities on 19th and bike storage located in the main parking lot to encourage cycling tourism and enhance mobility. There are also individual bike racks scattered in the village for convenience. We've included sidewalks on both sides of 19th and Main as well as the future Snur Lane. The parking is dispersed throughout the village with the larger facilities provided at the Fire Hall and across from the Jordan House. The design provides accommodation for bus tourists to encourage wine tourism. There's wayfinding through public art, notably paving techniques and landscape features. And the gathering space in the public square is for flexible event space, and there's also a potential for an extra flexible event space in the overfull parking lot behind the Fire Hall that we're looking at. There's continuity of design and materials to enhance circulation intuitively and bring a cohesive feel to the village, and as we move through detailed design, we'll be looking to implement materials that support sustainability and accessibility. So, design vision. The way we see it, urban design is public art. Urban design is wayfinding, and urban design is the destination. Public art is often desired in today's streetscapes. It provides animation to the urban realm, and it often reflects the local culture. Let me explain our vision and our idea about urban design being the public art. We believe that through thoughtful materials and features that are placed strategically, we can guide people through the urban realm instinctively without the need for extra sign. Just by what they see in the urban realm, they'll intuitively know which way to go. We all think of cities and landscapes that we gravitate towards as a destination purely because they look interesting and you want to experience it. Once you get there, you discover the whole experience of the place is like a work of art. It takes careful planning to create that experience, and it requires looking at the whole town holistically, ensuring that the experience starts from the moment you see that "Welcome to Jordan" sign. Our design envisions a streetscape that intuitively guides the user through the space and provides a pleasant experience from one end of the town to the other. Again, the urban design elements are the public art, sorry, the urban design elements are the public art, they are the wayfinding tools, and they are why people will come and experience Jordan Village. Once they are here, they will see what else the village has to offer, but often it's that overriding image that gets people there in the first place. So Jordan Village as a destination. We recognize that people will come to visit the Jordan House in that particular area. They will come to visit the museum, and they may come to visit the existing business area. But what we noticed through the process is there's a lack of connectivity from one end to the other, and that is our job, is to tie everything together as a whole. And we feel that most people are going to be arriving in that parking lot that you see down by the Fire Hall. Whether they're coming by car, or they're coming by bus, or they're coming by bike, we're looking at providing opportunities for parking for all modes, and the experience needs to start there. We need to continue the materials all throughout this village to create a holistic destination. So let's start by looking at the particulars of the design. So you can see, leading from that parking lot, we've got a ribbon that leads through to the public square. And this ribbon is meant to continue to connect the whole of Main Street through to the parking lot, and this is where it becomes the wayfinding tools. You follow the ribbon. This ribbon is reflective of the creek, the watersheds, and it's, you know, meant to invoke sort of a natural, natural flow. So the public square is meant to be a flexible space with the bold paving patterns to reflect the local environment. We'll move through to the next slide. The public square is a space for everyone. The picture there, the character that you see, indicates that we intend to continue the character on all four corners of the intersection, so that it's really an arrival zone regardless of which way you're approaching that intersection. This particular square, as we call it, is in reality a shared street where pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists will mix in the same space. The design includes paving and site furniture elements that blur the lines between vehicles and pedestrians, so vehicles instinctively move slowly in this space, if at all, and pedestrians feel free to wander anywhere. So this flexible space is a programmable space. It's a spontaneous gathering area. It's access for the adjacent businesses, and it's also a connection for people moving from King Street through to Main Street. It's approximately eight meters wide with a 1.5-meter clear zone on either side for We would, the idea being that we provide tactile cues in the paving to guide visually impaired persons through the space. We've proposed both fixed and flexible seating options for a quick rest or an extended visit. A mix of paving materials are designed to aid wayfinding and provide visual interest. We'll move on to a couple of sketches you'll see that illustrate the character of the space. You can see the paving and the seating and the importance of the trees and how it all can come together. This view is looking at the square from King Street. You can see the flexible furniture. You can see the clear zone on the outside, how you can provide a tactile strip that can guide somebody through the space, but, you know, people feel free to walk in the middle as well. And you'll notice the pillar at the front. These stone pillars are one of our wayfinding tools. Call them the Pillars of Jordan as public art and wayfinding. The idea being that they would be repeated throughout the village and you would, at various strategic points, so you can always see the next one ahead of you. And they would have sort of the stone and the local materials, all to be fleshed out in detailed design, of course, but this is sort of the precedent image. Paving materials can also be public art. They can be very interesting. They can be accessible. They guide people. They aid wayfinding and accessibility. The materials are to be durable and practical for the streetscape application, but they'll play their part in telling the story. Site furniture. We have stationary site furniture and we have flexible site furniture. The stationary site furniture will be both functional and aesthetic. They too are part of the story. At this time, we're looking at heritage-inspired furniture to go with the existing conditions that we see downtown. And site furniture is public art. Flexible furniture, as we saw in the sketch, the movable chairs around the Jordan House, we see that animating the space. You see, as a precedent, Paley Park. In this picture, they're all kind of neat, but often when you see pictures of Paley Park, they're scattered all over, people move them, and it really creates interest in the space. Public art, public safety is public art. Even the mundane details, if they're thoughtfully placed or designed, can add to the public realm. A simple bollard that's shaped like an acorn in this case, or the repetition of a round bollard, they all add to the urban realm. They're often overlooked, however. Site lighting is public art. Often, lighting is what makes the space. We're proposing in the pillars, the repeated pillars throughout the town, that we could do thematic lighting. We have a precedent we've done in Waterloo. It's a different scale and a different context, but the idea being that you could put light boxes inside the pillars that could be changed with the seasons. These pillars could store, they could be housed electrical for festivals. They can be functional as well as aesthetic and wayfinding tools. So let's take these ideas and move along through our concept vision. First, looking at Snur Lane as the new street that would be created to connect 19th and Main. We envision it as a narrow, narrow road with wide boulevards, the stone pillars at either end connecting as wayfinding, nice wide sidewalks, trees in soil cells so that they can grow mature and create a nice thick canopy. And you see that blue ribbon that is ever-present connecting you from the parking lot through Snur Lane in whether you're going to the public square or you're continuing down Main So Main Street. We envision that the same level of materials are continued from the public square through Main Street, and this is an illustration of what we imagine it to look like in front of the museum. We are imagining we're going to use soil cells to allow those trees to grow that mature canopy that is so important on Main Street. There's a precedent image there of the blue wave that we could, we could implement on the Main Street as a wayfinding tool. And up in the top left, you just see some of the materials. You get a feel for what we're thinking. We have on-street parking laybys and wayfinding pillars, strategically placed benches. And at this moment, I will pass it to Zibby to run through the cross-sections. We have come up with multiple cross-sections because of the existing conditions on Main Street.
Okay. So conventionally, we see one typical cross-section, but what's really important in this context is that we are really trying to be context-sensitive. So the cross-section varies a lot because we're trying to be sensitive to the adjacent land uses as well as being sensitive to existing mature trees, to try to keep as many of those mature trees as possible. So I will walk you through each of these cross-sections, and then we'll loop back to the presentation of all four. So the first, in each of these slides, you'll see a green arrow that shows you where you're placed along the corridor itself. So some of the consistent elements along Main Street for each of the different examples. We have two travel lanes. We've tried to keep the roadway cross-section fairly tight, so we've got typical lane widths for sort of a local collector roadway, as well as a proposed design and target speed of 30 kilometers an hour. So it's intended to be a pedestrian-friendly space. It's tended to be slow operations for motor vehicles. It's not intended to be high-speed or collector, recognizing the function of this roadway is really pedestrian priority. In all cases, we have sidewalks on both sides of Main Street of 1.8 meters at least, and what you'll see in the cross-sections is that vary in terms of the placement of that sidewalk to allow for either existing trees or site-specific conditions. And in some cases, we have parking on one or both sides. So in this particular cross-section, we've provided parking on the west side. So as we move a little bit further north, you can see that we were able to pull the sidewalk away from the curb, which is what our sort of desired treatment is. In the first example, we keep the sidewalk curb face to accommodate the existing mature tree, but in this context, we're able to provide a little bit more of a nice tree, green landscape, and boulevard. And then this cross-section shows you a little bit closer to the future Snur Lane, and this is a unique example because it's in close proximity to the live-work development. So what we've done there is we've introduced a parking layby adjacent to the development, and on the other side, we have a little bit more of an open space. This also marks the beginning of the transition into the public plaza, and so we've got a little bit of a sense of more pedestrian priority, wider sidewalks in this context. In the, a little bit further north along the corridor, closer to the future museum, you'll see that we have parking laybys on both sides, and that's to reflect the context of the existing commercial uses on the east side. So we've provided parking, generally speaking, wherever we could on both sides where we have those commercial sections of the corridor. And so that's why we have sort of four typical cross-sections. They vary considerably, but it's with good reason, which is that we're trying to match the land use context as well as sort of the physical geography. So to give you a sense of sort of what that will look like, this is an illustration showing outside of the museum. So the intent is that we would blend modern with heritage. We'd encourage wayfinding through our material choices. We would have landscape elements and really that emphasis on the tree canopy. We know that the existing tree canopy is part of what gives this street right now its charm, and the intent is to preserve and enhance that wherever possible. So now I'll do a little bit of a zoom in and discuss some of the cross-sections for 19th. The context for 19th is obviously a little bit different than Main Street. It's the community collector of the village, so we have to balance the need for access to the village with also the need to provide some mobility along the corridor. There's an existing fire station right on this corridor, so we need to accommodate fire trucks. We need to provide fire access, and we also know that this street may provide a little bit more of the continuity throughout the village. So the common elements throughout this corridor include sidewalks on both sides as well as unidirectional cycle tracks on both sides. We have a mix of places with parking and without parking depending on the land use context, and we have some variability in the placement of the sidewalk again to reflect conditions like utilities or the land use, so thinking about providing parking where it is a little bit more commercial. So I'll dive into each one of these. So as we get to the north edge of the corridor, sort of the typical conditions, we've got, again, two vehicular through travel lanes. We would have a design and target speed of 40 kilometers an hour, which is appropriate for a community collector, but again, trying to keep the roadway fairly tight. We know that speeding has been somewhat of an issue, so we want to control the speeding. We want to set people to travel the speed that we want them to in the context of this as a corridor. We're really valuing pedestrian and cycling access. So in this context, you can see that our frontage zone varies a little bit to deal with some existing conditions on the west side, so we're slightly constrained in terms of our sidewalk width on the west side, but in general, we meet or exceed 1.5 meters. In this section, we're able to get a little bit more space, so you can see that we'll probably be more into, oh, actually, we're showing 1.5-meter sidewalks in this section as well, but we have a little bit more of a frontage zone to accommodate the existing trees and conditions. So in this case, we're right across from the proposed parking lot, which would be kind of the core landing zone for people visiting the village. So again, we've got sidewalks at 1.8 on the west side and sidewalks at 1.5 on the east side, so we're able to get a little bit more width in terms of existing sidewalks and our unidirectional cycle tracks, along with parking on the west side in front of an existing commercial building. commercial building. So near the Jordan House, um, we've tried to provide some, uh, on-street parking consistent with current, uh, conditions. So we've got a parking layby as well as maintaining the sidewalks and cycle tracks. So just to give you, hopefully that gives you a bit of context why the conditions vary somewhat along the corridor, but we, we keep those core elements, um, the same. So this is looking south at the Fire Hall. Um, you can see a couple of different elements there that are important, uh, to the overall operations of the corridor. So we've got raised crosswalks, um, we've got pavers, the paving pattern you see to guide pedestrians to Snor Lane and to Jordan Village. You can see the placement of the pillar there, which is, is the breadcrumbs to lead you to Jordan Village itself. And you can see, um, the bidirectional, or sorry, the unidirectional cycle tracks. So Nineteenth closer to Wismer, um, this is sort of the gateway to the village, so we have a large stone pillar, um, as well as a relocated "Welcome to Jordan" sign and upgraded materials to provide consistency in wayfinding and image. So these are a little hard to see on the screen, but, um, generally speaking, we've tried to understand and, and illustrate the circulation throughout the whole, um, night, Main and Nineteenth and Jordan Village area. So what you see in the top is the pedestrian circulation. So we're showing sidewalks, we're showing controlled, formalized pedestrian crossings as well as showing the pedestrian square. For cyclists, we're showing, um, the unidirectional cycle tracks on Nineteenth as well as pointing out that, um, due to the low speeds on Main Street that we're anticipating, it, it is sort of comfortable and appropriate as a shared cycling facility. So cyclists would be encouraged or permitted to use Main Street as well as Nineteenth, but we're just providing a higher-order facility on Nineteenth. Uh, and then for vehicles, um, what we're showing is sort of a typical path of travel as well as highlighting, uh, the parking area, sort of a main landing point. We've also accommoda- accommodated, as we mentioned, the fire truck route, um, so just showing how that would work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jen.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, one of the, we, we see the use of soil cells being very important to the success of this design. We've heard over and over again how important the trees are, and we've seen research that says, you know, that you need a minimum of 24 cubic meters of soil per tree and, um, that the life of a, a street tree is, is only, I've heard as short as fo- five years. Some say 10. There's varying numbers out there, but the precedents seem to be going in the direction of a lot of the municipalities are putting in place a requirement for soil cells to ensure the life of their, the, the trees and to ensure that there's gonna be an urban cam- canopy and to fight, um, the heat island effect, et cetera. So there's the aesthetic quality of the trees, but there's also the, um, the sustainability and the environmental aspects of having, allowing a tree to, to grow to its potential. And they've done studies where the soil cells on one side of the street, uh, or trees that planted in soil cells on one side of the street and not on the other, and they'll grow three to five times faster in the soil cells. And it's not just about the size or the, the rate of growth. It, it protects your sidewalks, it protects everything around it because the roots have a place to go rather than lifting your sidewalks and having to replace them. So, uh, we're looking in depth at the use of, of soil cells throughout the village, and we definitely think that it's important in the, in the parking areas. Again, because you've usually got a large expanse of paving there. So that's one aspect that we will be looking at. And then the second image, again, it's a little tough to see, but it just shows you the ribbon and the location of the pillars and the tying of all those urban design elements throughout the village. And then the last picture there, the topic that always comes up, parking. And people usually spend a lot of time talking about parking, so we've put a lot of thought into the parking. We've spread it throughout the village, and again, we wanna make that landing zone, uh, you know, we don't wanna make it just a parking lot. We wanna make that an arrival zone. So, looking at these parking, parking areas. So we want, we see the trees being in soil cells. We've got, um, you know, landscape areas between the, um, parking. And you can see the, the area that's dark is the main, what we call the main parking area, and it would be asphalt, but the area behind the fire station there, we're considering an alternative material. It might be, um, it might be grass in the, the Echo Raster, um, so, you, everyone's familiar with that. So, uh, it could be gravel, it could be grass, it could be an alternative material just because it could be, uh, a farmer's market possibly. So tho- those are things that we will look at through as we move forward with the design. And we, we know that there's currently a, a kiosk there for a wine tour, and we imagine that that will continue in the future. So we have a, a bus route that goes around the back of the parking lot. We've purposely put it at the outside away from the residential so that you would come in and you'd make the loop and go back out. And we would, uh, provide bike lockers there. And, uh, we also see an opportunity for some sort of information kiosk that's maybe run by the town. The other parking area is near the Jordan House, and we see that area being permeable pavers given its proximity to the natural area. And, uh, we definitely need to tie the materials to the materials that are going on with the plaza to make it, again, it's, it's all, you don't wanna see this parking lot adjacent to this beautiful public square. You want it to all tie together. So that, that will conclude our presentation, and we'll leave this slide for everyone to peruse. Uh, it's, we see Jordan Village as an enhanced destination and a community for all. And there, we'll open up the questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was, um, exciting, to say the least. And there's a bunch of elements in there that I think we're all looking for, so, um, I'm going to, to now, uh, ask if there's any questions from committee. And what we're going to do, we're going to do it a little bit different because we're on a strict timeline tonight. We're going to, um, gonna start with the Ward Counselor, Councilor McPherson, then we're gonna start on my right. I'm gonna go around the horseshoe. If you don't have any questions, you say, "I don't have any questions," and we'll move on. So I'm sure people have been jotting their notes feverishly, so that's the way we're gonna work it rather than back and forth and multiple questions, and I've already asked that. I'm gonna do it this way, given our time factor. So, Councilor McPherson, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, through you, uh, thank you to the delegation. Very exciting day, uh, to get to where we are today. It had been a long time, uh, in the works, and to see this, this concept is, is thrilling. It really is. It's, uh, you know, it's got, I think, the makings of, uh, what we're looking for in, in Jordan. Now, a couple of questions. Uh, you made a comment that, um, the parking would, would get to the Fire Hall and go from there. So my experience is the Fire Hall parking lot is not used very, very often at all. So what would direct people to now go to that parking lot as opposed to going to the parking lot down by the shops or to the Jordan House parking lot? What, what makes us think that people are gonna utilize that parking lot?
And that's where the design comes in. We need those pillars, we need those wayfinding tools, we need to, like, loud and clear, tell people, "This is where you need to go." I mean, we all go into, I don't know, any, any tourist destination, and there's, I mean, there's usually big ugly signs. We're gonna do that a little more subtly, but we, we need to have those specific wayfinding tools to, to direct them there. So we envision you're going to drive down Nineteenth, and you're gonna see that, that pillar. You've already seen the "Welcome to Jordan" sign at that point, the, the pillar, it's a repetition, and you've arrived. We're gonna have, we're proposing a raised intersection at Snor and Nineteenth, and they'll be, the crosswalks would be pavers. It gets a, you've, you're not gonna just keep driving. You've, you've arrived, and you're, we're gonna have to have some sort of signage that's gonna say, "This is where you're, where you're parking." That's, we can't kid ourselves about that, but it, it's all in the, the design tools. And, uh...
And the, through you, Mr. Chair, is the fact that now we have a closed Main Street, the cars are forced down by that parking lot. Um, and, and as you say, hopefully, we can direct them in. And I think that I, the natural thing is still to go probably by the shops, and as long as that's empty, they're gonna park there, but that's okay too.
But they're gonna get to this first for the most...
They will get, they will get to this first, but it's a longer walk.
It is, it is a longer walk to those shops, but they might be going to the Jordan House area because we're, you know, we're elevating that area as well. So, and that's the idea, is that it's, in the long run, it's not just the shops at that end. The whole town is the destination. It's, they're not just coming to that one location.
Okay, okay. If I may, Mr. Chair, um, so on the town square, um, so, uh, the picture you've got is, is a bunch of people sitting around in the, um, the non-stationary or the movable furniture. What's the attraction there? Like, what, why would people sit there? Uh, you know, I guess, I, I'm seeing a big, open space, which, you know, is, is nice, but what gets, i- i- you know, I don't know, I don't think the Jordan House is serving there. That's, that's not the intent, is it?
I don't think so.
It's just, it, it, like, I'm thinking, I'm thinking fountain, I'm thinking something that is attractive, that's, that's getting folks to say, "Hey, let's sit." You know, "Let's, let's, let's chat," you know, and, and I'm just wondering also, on the movable furniture, what happens in the wintertime? Are, are, is the, is the furniture still there? Is it not there? So maybe just those two questions around the town square.
There's definitely going to be some logistics around the, the flexible furniture. There's no doubt about that. That plan would have to be put in place, but, um, it's, you know, it's something that could be coordinated possibly with the, the local merchants. But I think some people like to sit in a, um, sit at the edges, and other people like to be right in the middle. They, uh, they'll wanna move their chair to wherever, or they'll wanna move five feet away from that other person. And I think it's, it's, or the sun might be five feet over there. It, it, there's, there's, it adds some animation and flexibility that it's not always the same. And I think with the pillar and, and the, the paving and the planting that's gonna occur in that space, like, I think the whole space is a destination. I don't think you necessarily, um, I mean, there could be a fountain, but I, I, it's not as big a space as I think we all think it is. It's, like I said, it's only eight meters wide, I think. It's really not, and if we need to accommodate delivery trucks, we have to make sure that there's enough room, and the fire truck, to make sure there's enough room for them to get through that middle.
May I? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe a question through the staff, uh, discussion around the trees. And, uh, I'm led to believe that the trees have a, a fairly short life expectancy, the ones that are there today, that, uh, we can expect to be replacing those big old trees in the next 10 years. Is that not the case anymore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The last study that we had did show, um, different lifespans for different trees. We're hoping through the detailed design and the soil cells that maybe we can extend some of the life of these trees, but yes, um, that, that was around the average life expectancy about five years ago. It was between five and 15 years depending on the tree.
And that, sorry, that, that is our understanding as well. The intent is not to keep these trees forever. The intent is to allow them to live long enough to get these other trees to a state where we're not just starting in a whole new bare street. That's, and it, we may, we may find through detailed design that there are trees that we can't save, but our goal is to try to save them because we think that they're very important.
And, and, uh, it's good to know, and, and, you know, I, I'd think we'd want to not be designing the sidewalks, et cetera, around trees that are gonna be gone in 10 years. That's my point, is, is why bother? You know, if, if the trees are going to be 25 or 50 years, okay, but if, if those trees are, are going to be gone, uh, you know, why are we, why are we, uh, designing, you know, the, the, uh, the, the sidewalks, the road, et cetera, around those trees? And I understand that it's, it's not as easy as just taking the trees out and we put in new, small trees. I understand that. But, uh, you know, is, if there's another option for larger trees to go in and say, "Hey, the canopy that you see today is, is going to be gone in 10 years anyway, so we're, we're, we're gonna start new with a brand-new, with a brand-new road, brand-new sidewalks, brand-new setup with, you know, 30-foot trees, 40-foot trees, and, and they're gonna go, you know, up to 60, 70 feet in 10 or 15 or 20 years."
And we recognize that, and there may, uh, and it may come to, we don't end up keeping the trees, but, um, we wanted to at least look at it because it is important. And from my perspective, the fact that a, a sidewalk might not go straight all the way down the street is not a bad thing, because when you look at these small towns, like, you can tell the new towns from the old towns because the old ones will go around a tree. So I, for me, that was a little bit of a, a local character thing too, so we definitely wanted to consider it.
Okay. And, and site, the, the site lighting will be something that we'll see, um, in the detailed design, I guess. It's not something you're gonna, you're prepared to, uh, to get into any detail here. I, I like the idea of, of, uh, some, some lighting that, uh, you know, would be shone on the pillar or, um, you know, it makes, makes, uh, makes it attractive in the evening, so. Uh, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, um...
One more, 'cause you know what? After I said this, we're gonna go five minutes per counselor because, yes. So, last question.
Well, I get some, I get one extra, just...
You're getting it right now, so, let's go.
Like the concept, so not saying I don't, but are there options to the pillars? You know, are there things that, that you, in your experience, that you've put in other, designs like this that we could say, "Hey, it's the pillars or it's this," you know, to give us some kind of idea of something other than the pillars? Just for the sake of an option?
We could. We've gone down this road with the pillars quite a ways, 'cause it's... For us, we felt like it was, uh, really speaking to sort of the old stone walls, and we felt it, it really spoke to the local character. Plus, it was a functional design because it can house the electrical, et cetera, for these, uh, uh, events that you might wanna hold. So half, halfway down the street, you've got, you've got electrical, and it's all hidden in a pillar, so there was sort of a functional and an aesthetic purpose to those.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think aesthetically, it's, it's very well laid out. Like, I can foresee a lot of different events, uh, in the space. I like the way that, again, the uniformity between, uh, again, the, the path that you kinda follow to get to from place to place. My, my concern, uh, or questions would be around the traffic flow, particularly in and around the Jordan House and that back parking area where it looks like you've got the pillars that cross Main Street to kind of prevent traffic from coming into that main, main area. Will that be a two-way in and out of that, I guess it would be west side of the parking lot? Closest to that auxiliary parking area?
So up by the Jordan House, you mean?
Yeah.
So here. Uh, yeah, you would, basically, the parking area will be as far as most vehicles would go. The only reason you would go any farther is if you were a fire truck or you were a delivery vehicle, or you were somebody who had specifically arranged to pick something up from that business beyond there. We would have, um, dropdown bollards that would be in place so you couldn't go any farther.
We would have dropdown bollards that would be in place, so you couldn't go any farther.
Right. But just on that picture there, on the bottom right of it, where there's actually a parking lot entrance into the Jordan.
Oh, that's the Jordan, that's the Jordan House private parking lot, yeah.
Right. Would there, would, would that be a two-way? So people could come out of the parking lot but also turn in from that street? Is there enough room there? Or is it, again, it may just be that those bollards are set a little bit further conceptually on the drawing?
Yeah, we weren't, we're, the intent is just to discourage anybody to go in there. The details of that need to still be worked out, but the intent is that, no, you couldn't go beyond into the, you would only be able to go right out onto Main Street.
And from a licensing standpoint, with the Jordan House, there's enough parking there for their liquor constraints or for the capacities?
We haven't gotten into that level of detail yet.
And last question, just with the, again, I'm just being maybe overly logical, but with the way that the auxiliary parking lots are set up, this one and as well as the one by the fire hall, from a snow removal standpoint, I would think that's quite challenging. And same with the other one, just because of the nuances of the design. Has that been factored in at all? Because we do have a lot, we do have a big winter event down that way.
Yeah, I mean, this, the one by the fire station, I think, has lots of opportunity for, you know, snow removal. Is it the easiest design? No. But we always design parking lots the easiest way to remove the snow. And I'm not sure that that's going to necessarily achieve what you're, the overall vision that you're after. So we need to weigh the, the checks and balances there.
Like aesthetically, it looks fabulous, but then, I, again, I just think, once you get a foot of snow coming down in a big storm and you're trying to have a big event the next day, it could be a challenge. It's my only thought, Mr. Chair.
And once we get into detailed design, we'll look at those sorts of practicalities, but, yeah.
No, but overall, thank you very much. Great job.
Okay. Counselor Machuma.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. My question has to do with accessibility, and I recognize that you've brought up a couple of measures within this with high-level design that, that addresses accessibility. So in the process between here and detailed design, by the way, I'm the new appointee on our Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. So we just had our new, first meeting a few weeks ago, and have another one in a couple of weeks. So I, I have a, from some of my background, a pretty good understanding of different types of challenges there are and that people deal with on a regular basis. So at this point, we're, okay, so in this process, do you have somebody that you consult with for accessibility? I know that at some point, some of our site plans that we have coming to the town go to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. So I'm not sure what's gonna happen in this process, and I'm interested in seeing what, what it is you do for accessibility consulting. And, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I think it's not something we've settled on yet, but I think it would important, be important for us to bring our plans to the accessibility committee and review some of the elements that we've proposed. We have some sort of unique treatments that we're thinking of. So obviously, we have tactile plates at all of our signalled crossings, but we're also looking at raised linear directional tactile plates through the plaza to provide another layer of accessibility. So I, I think it would be really important for us to meet with the accessibility committee through this process.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. So there's sight, there's sound, there's physical, there's all kinds of accessibility issues, even, even overstimulation that people go through. Anyway, so I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Brené.
Thank you, Chair. So we have five minutes or five questions?
We've got five minutes.
Okay.
And you can, you can capitalize on your other two counselors there, they were good.
There'll be jibs and jabs.
Okay.
So you, you mentioned, thanks for your presentation, you mentioned that this is concept development stage, but when it comes to, 'cause we've, we've been burned on some of these projects. So when, when it comes to burying hydro, is that, is that an item that's up for discussion or it's being buried at this point? I see the number, 1.35 million. I don't want that to be scaring people, but.
Yeah, that was, we've talked about that quite a bit. I, I think we feel on Main Street that we'd really like it to be buried. We feel the character of it would be much better with it buried. 19th was more of a debate whether it should be buried or not. It is a, a large price tag to bury it. Obviously, it's preferred to bury, but I think I'm right in saying that on 19th, it could be more flexible.
Yeah, 19th could be more flexible. I, although I will say that in keeping the poles, almost every single one of them needs to be moved to accommodate it. So there's still a cost there. It's, but it is still less than burying it. It's just that if you look at any urban realm where the, the hydro is buried versus not, I mean, it improves it significantly. So it's just a, it's a decision of whether it's worth it or not, so.
So the 1.35 million is for all relocation or just 19th Street?
Um, the, yeah. Sorry, that's the wrong presentation.
Mr. Kerkopoulos, do you have some info?
Yeah, you have it there.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could just chime in on this particular point, because Mr. Graham and I have met with representatives of Niagara Peninsula Energy, and I think it's more than just a cost issue as it relates to 19th versus Main Street. There's definitely a, a willingness to look at Main Street, also in terms of the transmission type of wire and electricity that runs through Main Street is very different than the large kind of transmission and trunk line that runs on 19th. So I think 19th, in a lot of ways, when we had the conversation at an operational level, seemed to be a little bit of a non-starter, but Main Street, there was definitely a lot of, I think, agreement, and Director Graham can chime in, and I think add anything that I may have missed, but definitely a lot of agreement in terms of burying it. And I think we're working on what that looks like and mitigating those costs as well.
Okay, that's perfect. I'm good for that. I don't wanna lose out my five minutes just on hydro. It's perfect, thank, thank you for addressing that. So I, I wanna go to the blue, the blue ribbon. So, so I, I get it, you know, it's the meandering stream from the, from, from 19th or whatever the river is, correct, that runs through there? What is it, Counselor?
20 mile.
20 mile. But is it, is this, is this blue concrete? It, I, you know, I get the, I get the idea that we're talking about a lot of paving stone in here with a lot of colors, I'm hoping, you know, grays and, and blues and silts, but is this colored concrete that's the blue ribbon?
At this moment, it's proposed as, as colored concrete. Yeah, the, the road, Main Street, we were proposing it to be plain concrete with a blue ribbon through it. Now, we're looking at options for different materials, but ideally, I think that that would be, that would be our first choice to get the, for durability and to get the point across. I think that would be our preferred material.
Okay. You mentioned, on the thematic lighting, you mentioned Waterloo. I just happened to be up in Waterloo for the next three days. Where's that project?
Yeah, so it's downtown Waterloo, sort of between William and up to, just past Bridgeport, I believe. And you'll see it around the trees. It's got the, the, if you go at night, you'll, can't miss it.
Perfect. You mentioned heritage-inspired furniture. Can you tell me what that means in terms I can understand?
Well, we, we looked at sort of sleek, modern furniture versus heritage-inspired furniture. We can go back to that, that slide. It's just, you know, they're the black iron, they've got the curls in the arms, they're just very traditional-looking versus, yeah, there.
Okay, so that's heritage-inspired, okay.
Yeah, versus something that's like steel and modern and, yeah.
Yep, okay. I, I do agree, I wanna go back to Counselor McPherson's question about your reference to the parking and where we would hope that people would go to. I, I get what you're saying, that it's wayfinding and it's, it's all these other themes that, you know, that are gonna point people in the right direction, but currently, I, I don't see that. But I just, you know, I just wanna get that point out, that, you know, obviously, this is what you guys do, and hopefully, you take us to where we wanna go. But currently, I, I don't, I don't see that. So I just, I just wanted to reinforce that. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, currently, you know, I, I imagine in large events, there'd be overflow parking. Certainly, on a typical day, I think people are obviously gonna drive to the closest point that they're trying to get to and, and park there. But I think we're looking to the future when there could be, you know, this plaza is inviting a lot more people to it, and as the, the village grows up a bit more, there's gonna be a need and more, much more demand on parking, and that's what we're sort of trying to design for, so.
Okay, good point, thank you.
I, I really like the idea that, you know, when you go through the different areas, we, we're using the tree canopy and we're widening out for active transportation where we can with larger, you know, bike areas, larger sidewalks going from 1.5 to 1.8. I really love that idea. I did have one more question here, and I just gotta find it. I've lost it. You know, this is, as you say, concept, and we gotta start somewhere, so this is great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Counselor. Mary Easton.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I really don't have any questions. I'd like to caution you that I think we need to move beyond pretty pictures. I think there are some serious features here around parking and the way this really already lovely little heritage village needs to be considered for the future. I understand you're really applying design principles to the space that's there. So I'll just be watching, I guess, very carefully in terms of what your recommendations are, but we could certainly start with, with parking. The pillars, I just, I'm not warming up to them easily, but I'm sure that as time goes by, we'll, we'll find something that's appropriate. You might, I'd like to guide you down the road. If you go west on King Street, you'll find the First Mennonite Church there. Outside of the church, there's a very large pillar, that, a stone pillar that's quite attractive. It has large Conestoga wagon wheels on it. It would be very appropriate for this area. I, I hope you've researched the history. The Conestoga wagon would certainly, would fit in very, very well here. But certainly, I think we're all concerned that this be some, a place that's very, very special, and I'm afraid that I, I just am not interested in pretty pictures at the moment. I really want to see the more concreteness. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Timbers.
I think most of my questions have been answered by now, but thank you very much for the presentation. It is exciting. I had written down the pillars. I'm not, I'm not buying into the pillars very much either. I, you know, Jordan has such a wealth of history, and I'd like to see that reflected as well, the heritage of that area. The movable chairs in the public space, I'm not a fan. I, although I do like the furniture, it does have a, you're trying to get a heritage look and feel. I, I'm not quite sure why people would sit there either. I, I kinda feel the same way as Counselor McPherson. I don't know what would draw people to sit on that busy corner, but I'm not quite sure about that space right now. I think we do need something that will draw people to want to spend time in that area. The parking across from the Jordan House, too, I see issues there. How people will access it, I'm not sure. You said there were movable bollards. Now, is that, delivery trucks can come down into Main Street if they're to the businesses that are at the end? I'm, I'm not sure of that. Is that?
Yeah, if necessary, though, you know, there has to be, that has to all be worked out, how that would work in terms of, is it a certain day of week, is it a certain time window? But we have, you know, left the center open so that a delivery truck could get in there.
Okay, thank you. On Snur Lane, I like, you know, the sidewalks on both sides, but at the end, is it just, you have pattern, that's not speed bumps? I saw on the design lined, I wasn't sure what they were, at the bottom of Snur.
So at the, at Snur and 19th, you mean?
No, Snur and Main.
Oh, Snur and Main, both, so both ends, it's a raised intersection. So raised, and then the whole Snur Lane is at the same elevation. So it really gives you a different feel and makes it pedestrian-oriented. And, yeah, no, it's, it's paver, uh, paver crosswalks is what's intended at this moment, but then you have, you know, you're ramped down at those intersections. So that's probably what you're expecting.
So people are slow. Okay, I wasn't sure what that was exactly. Okay, let me just take one more look here, so Main Street. I think that's it for me for now, but thank you very much.
Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair Patriva. A couple of questions. Thank you very much for coming tonight and for the presentation. I think it might be more to staff, but it has to do with traffic. And I think we talked about this during some of our budget presentations. Are we gonna be detouring truck traffic, I assume, through 19th, sorry, 17th, like through Jordan Road and then King Street around the village? Will we be, I guess, to the, to staff, Chair, are we gonna be stopping traffic from going through here? Uh, it's truck traffic, sorry?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think the idea was, is that 19th Street is a collector road, and there are businesses there, and it is a natural corridor for trucks to travel and all, all types of vehicles. But I think we're hoping through the design that, that, that trucks, especially local delivery trucks, unless you have to be here, would probably not feel overly comfortable in this area and would hopefully detour over to Jordan Road to, to access that corridor. So I think it's through the design and the raised crosswalks and, and all of the, the other elements with the active transportation and the sidewalks and the trees that hopefully, you know, it slows people down, the 40-kilometer-an-hour speed reduction, that, you know, it becomes less of a, a main corridor for truck delivery.
But, but if it does, do we have the option, just because those are regional roads then? So if people are coming down Jordan Road to, you know, the intersection by the arena there, those are both regional roads. Do we have options, or do we have, when truck traffic becomes too much, if it becomes too much, to, to keep them going down Jordan Road to King Street? Or is that a regional matter?
It's something that we can work with the region in the future on if it does become an issue, and we can look at it a bit further.
Okay. And also, a question about the, the bike routes. They just, like, for now, I realize that, you know, what the scope of work here is, is to the end of, of Fourth Avenue, like, do we have visions of them going down to the village, like connecting the rest of Jordan and Jordan Station? Or are they gonna go down Fourth Avenue to the, to the ballpark and arena area?
We haven't looked at it beyond, too far beyond our scope, but we did identify that, I mean, with the two schools there, we feel like it would be a missed opportunity to not at least carry it that far. But we haven't looked beyond there because our, this is the, sort of our scope of work.
And the hydro question was already asked. I like the flow of the, I like the concept, that river idea. My concern would be the type of material that we use there, just that, that can be prohibitive in a project if we're gonna, if that's gonna be a separate material, or what kind of material that's gonna be. So just to keep open to different types of coatings or, as opposed to the material itself being a, a blue concrete or something like that, just a, just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, I've got a few comments here before I open it up too quickly, if anyone's had a, a couple things come to mind after hearing. Having been on council since 2003 and sat, sitting, or having sat through numerous iterations of this, I love it. I think you are almost there now. Having said that, there's a couple of questions. I, I think the, the, and, and you answered the questions because I, too, wasn't keen on the pillars. But when you said they could light up, because I was gonna say, if we could put solar panels in them and light them up purple and red and blue in the winter, I think you got a home run there. Now, the issue with the one at the Jordan House, you know, we've got an obelisk like that in St. Catherine's at the corner of St. Paul and Ontario Street, which is the which is the laughing stock of the Niagara Peninsula. I don't want to be number two. So it's, 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 it's a, it's a point of a destination. So whether it's the arch in St. Louis, whether it's a fountain, a fountain would be nice, but is it practical? No, we'd probably have, be like a scene from The Hangover, we'd have people swimming in it, there would be goldfish in it, you name it. Those East End group are a crazy bunch, so. But I think what we need to do is we need to look at it holistically because we're doing a wayfinding signage and a signing, signage package throughout the town. So whether it's a destination wall signage with, with trickling water to tie into the blue, I think if you look at Prince Edward County, they've developed that wall signage and then it becomes a, a point of recognition on the, on the lettering and, and so you really need that sense of we've arrived and we're leaving. So maybe that's something, you know, that you could, to further look at. Reflecting the color, so I, I talked about that. With respect to the bike trail, the waterfront trail has access through the village, so have a look at that. Counselor Reimer's question with traffic. When, when we did the initial traffic counts, a lot of the traffic on Nineteenth Street is through traffic going down to Fourth Avenue and across to Jordan Road and down. So whether it's traffic islands or something in there to further narrow that and give it that perception that it's 40, but it's narrow and, and you don't want to do it. With respect to the parking, I myself, having, having worked in that area for four years, having run events in that area, bang on, you've got it. The people, the reason people don't use it right now, it's, it's a stone, it's, it's, I have a word and I can't say the word, but, but, you know, and I think, we removed the sand dome in 2005 or 2006 with this vision. And, and I think that you've got a kind of, you, you've captured it with, you know, the, the, the pavement, the permeable pavement and setting up a, a farmer's market there. So now you've got a destination, so now you've got a sense of arrival. And again, it, it gets ingrained and, and the curving, I love that. The pedestrian mall, again, since 2005, we talked about this, Spark Street. It's all what you make of it. The, the movable furniture, it's dynamite, right? It's, it's like you say, the sun's coming and that's the first thing you would hear. I can't see the sun's in my eyes. So, you know, relocating and it's, and it's about creating a public space. Whether there's, and, and if I'm, if I'm the avant-garde Emporium, I'm having a sidewalk sale every weekend. I'm helping to, to functionalize that as a destination. I look at our community service group, we're having art shows there, we're having markets there, we're having pop-up, lead the breadcrumbs down to the museum. There's, there's, it's limitless what you can do there. And, and you just have to put your, your thinking cap on and say, okay, how do we activate the space? And let's think 50 years out. I think you got it. And, and events will draw people to the area. And then that movement will become part of, of their, their habits, becomes habit-forming. So I think it's great and, and I just, this is going to, I'm just going to, I'm going to lob this out here because I need to say it. I think the buried hydro infrastructure, I think it's, I think it's a good move. We're seeing, you know, drastic climatic events coming. I think it's the right way to go. Doing this helps remove service interruption from the village. I will endorse this as the right thing to do. Unlike previous East End counselors who did not see the merit to do this on Mountain Street and the center of the BIA. So thank you very much. I look forward to the vision becoming reality and, and I think you're there. Few little tweaks and I'm of the ilk, let's go. Let, we, we've kicked this around, we're not going to please everyone, but you know what, if we please the majority and we change patterns and we change habits and we create a world-class destination, then you know what, take our hat off. We've done our job. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, uh, through you, ask a question about the Nineteenth Street, King Street intersection. Is that on your agenda? Okay. So there's not, there's not a lot of detail, you didn't, you didn't talk about the Nineteenth Street intersection there. And I'm expecting that the detailed design will show us a whole lot more about that corner. It's obviously a huge intersection and, you know, I'm just looking at, at the traffic that's coming up from the Jordan Hollow and there's a turn lane there which is Nineteenth Street. And a question, are we, are we identifying the turn in the intersection with, with lines that, that direct that line of traffic? Is that part of it? Doesn't need to be answered right now. The other thing is the stoplights and, and, you know, how do they look? And will they be in the look and feel of the Jordan Village? Uh, and I'm assuming you're going to have a lot of them, you know, on this, on this intersection. So you can comment on that one.
Yes, certainly, we're looking at that intersection. It's a regional-owned intersection and we'll be coordinating, obviously, with them. And I think we have talked about, you know, different styles and that, we are limited to, you know, what's legally allowed.
Sure.
And that, but certainly we'll be working with the region on that. Did that answer earlier?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, the worst, you know, those huge pipes that come up and go all the way across the intersection. I don't know if you're familiar with those, like, you see them down in, down in Florida and whatnot, yeah. We're looking for something, you know, it doesn't have to be cute, but it has to be, you know, within the look and feel of, of what we're trying to create here.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Russell, you get the last word.
One quick follow-up through you, Mr. Chair. If we could go to slide 11, if that's possible? And maybe my fellow counselors in the Jordan area can enlighten me. Building 3738, what is that building used for right now? Okay, is it a, is it a currently operated business? Okay. My concern here is that, again, this new design would eliminate all drive-by traffic of those locations with immediate parking in front of them or near them. Again, there could be some precaution or some potential down the road where they may become non-viable and you have empty spaces there, depending on how much traffic of walk-by you get by. Just a consideration because of that lack of drive-by traffic. Again, I don't know what business that is, but.
That's why this has taken 15 years to try to get across the finish line, Counselor.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so we want it, we want to animate that, we want to create something vibrant, we want you to park, we want you to walk. That was the result of the previous holdup. So we need a mover for this motion. Counselor McPherson, all is in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk? To, oh, say, okay, so I've required the mover, so that's Counselor McPherson. So Counselor McPherson is moving to receive and file the presentation from John Perks, Associate Director of the IBI Group Regarding the Jordan Village Improvement Project. All is in favor? Okay. And none opposed? We have no confidential items, any staff remarks? Mr. Kay?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Staff will continue to work with both our consultants on this as well as other pertinent stakeholders and, and including council. So we've heard a lot of the comments today and we'll definitely be regrouping and figuring out how we incorporate all of those moving forward.
Fantastic. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.